I'd like to call to order the town council regular session at 7:40. The date is Monday, March 14th, 2011. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and our apologies for not starting right at 7:30. Dale, could we have the roll call, please?
Council President Whaley.
Here.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy.
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. We have the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. Could we have a motion, please, for the work session, February 28th, 2011?
I move approval of the work session minutes for February 28th, 2011.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 5-0-0. We have the regular session, February 28th, 2011.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 5-0-0. Would any town councillor request any item from the consent agenda to be removed?
Hearing none. I'm going to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to the public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing relative to an application for expansion of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956 as amended as follows. I'll just read through this quickly. We have an application for expansion of a Class B vicuula license, liquor license, filed by Captain Jackson Incorporated, 706 Succotash Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Jack Pemont, president. Application requests permission to expand the area in which alcoholic beverages may be served to include a deck approximately 20 feet by 25 feet and relief from the stipulation that alcohol be served in connection with food only in accordance with special use permit granted by the zoning board of review on January 19th, 2011, and as further defined in an amended site plan dated January 24th, 2011, on file in the town clerk's office. So, we have the public hearing open, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Steve. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay. I'm Jack Pemont. I own Captain Jack's Restaurant, and I'm here to get a change in my vicuula license.
So, the questions here on the table before I speak? Carol.
Jack, you're looking, you want to put on a deck approximately 20 feet by 25 feet. Are you planning on serving food on the deck with the alcohol?
Yes.
Because in, you're looking for relief from the stipulation that alcohol be served in connection with food only, so what exactly are you looking for?
Presently, the ordinance says that I can't, you can't, if you came in and was waiting for a table, I can't serve you a drink while you're waiting. You have to be sitting down having food, and we'd like to be able to serve people, like everybody else, a drink while you're waiting.
So, you want to serve them on the deck also?
Yes.
If they're waiting for a table inside?
The deck will be full service, food and whatever, and alcohol.
Okay. So, where, so you're looking for this anywhere in your building? Like, if you want to wait and have a drink, it doesn't necessarily have to be on the deck?
No.
While you're waiting?
Yeah, in both dining rooms, in the whole restaurant, wherever we serve food.
But you're not trying to have alcohol only? Like, these are for people waiting to eat?
No, 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 no.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Because I thought, you know, we thought that that was what you wanted to do, but...
Well, I would like to do what everybody else is doing. You know, if they come in for a drink, be able to serve them. We've had people leave. You know, they want to sit down, have, you know, it's hot or cold beer, and we can't do that.
Uh-huh.
And they leave. And everybody else around is doing that, so I would like to also do that.
But you would have food available on the deck. It wouldn't be like you're trying to have a deck without food.
No, 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 no.
Right.
It's going to be a full service.
Okay.
A full menu.
Further questions here at the table? Polly.
Would you be willing to change the wording, then, to state? It now says that the alcohol be served in connection with food only. You want a relief from that, and you really don't want relief from that. What you want relief from is not being able to serve people before they get table seating. Do you see the difference?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay. To me, what is written there now is that you, you want, you want to be able to serve alcohol without food.
Right.
And what you really want is to be able to serve alcohol before people have food.
Or, if they just come in for a drink, I want to be able to serve them. I don't want to still, you're tying me back down to the food end of it. They're saying they're waiting. Nobody else in town is doing that except me. There is no other licenses that says, "I can't serve because I have to have to eat." I would like to do what everybody else is doing.
But we have never allowed people to serve alcohol without also serving food.
Well, the restaurant's serving food. I mean, I don't, still not understanding you.
What, what we're trying to get away from, I believe that back in 1979, Jack, this came up, and many times after that, is that we don't want people coming off the beach and then drinking and then getting on the road so that, we want to make sure that they have food in them also, they're drinking. And right now, we require that from all of our restaurants with liquor licenses. So, that's here, the verbiage that you have is you want relief from the stipulation that alcohol be served in connection with food. So, what that says to us with that verbiage is that you just want to serve alcohol without having people responsible for buying food.
Mainly, I'm hopefully, they do come in and eat, but if someone comes in, we have it now, and, you know, we don't do it, and they just can't even get seated. I'd just like to do what everybody else is doing in the area, and they are doing it in the area.
Have we been informed of any violations of that, Steve? That people have been just going in and drinking and not...
I'm not aware that people are going to a restaurant in that area that are consuming alcohol without food. My understanding was that they're, the other restaurant that is being referred to here, if somebody has put their name in for a table and they ask for a drink, they can have the drink while they're waiting for the table. I'm not aware that people are going in and not consuming any food and just simply consuming alcohol. If that's the case, I'm not aware of it. And that is not what the intent was as far as the provisions for that other restaurant. In fact, you go back to 1979 when Captain Jack's, as well as the Seagull, which was the predecessor to the Oyster Bar, came in, each of those restaurants had the provision for the service of food. The Oyster Bar received approval in 2004 to have outside seating, again with the requirement, I think it was 24 seats at that time, again with the requirement that it was not as a drinking patio, but rather the food was to be consumed along with the meal. If that existing bar owner, restaurant owner is looking to change that, they would need to go through the zoning board because those provisions, I believe, from 1979 still exist. And if, in fact, people are using that as a bar rather than eating the food, it would be in violation of the special use permit that they have today, as I understand it.
So, does that, does that help clarify things, Jack?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Let me go with Kathy first.
Well, I was going to say, so I think really what we have to do here, Jack, is, is, I understand what you're saying for, in the area. So, if people are waiting on queue, online, to sit down in your restaurant, then that is deemed appropriate. But again, just to stand there to have a drink, if there's traffic coming out and they pull in and say, "We're going to have a beer here, a couple of beers here," and leave, that's not okay. That's, that's what we're trying to say here.
I understand.
So, that's why the verbiage here had us a little bit concerned about that, you know, to remove that stipulation that it could be in connection with food only, that's not, that's really what we're trying to protect against. So, if they're in queue, waiting to sit down, that's understandable. But anything other than that, then we get into, it could be a problem, and that's what we're trying to avoid in that particular area.
I understand.
So, that's why that verbiage concerned us. I don't think, even when the zoning board put that together as part of their speak, I don't think that's what they were considering.
I can, giving an example, we have people waiting in line. We say, "It's going to be a half hour, give them a pager." They leave us and go up the street and get a drink.
And you want to keep them in your restaurant?
I would like to keep them there.
Absolutely. That's another scenario.
I mean, and there, they're just serving, they're just going up there for a drink.
How can we get a drink up the street without food and come back? We can't have conversations off the sidebar here.
Yeah, you're going to have to come to the microphone. I'm sorry if you, if you want to speak. But I will repeat what you just said. When people leave your restaurant with a pager and they go down the street for a drink and then come back, how do they do that? That's the question on the table. Okay? And we're not aware that that's going on, but if they're waiting in line with a pager for you for half an hour, they're able to sit and have a drink with you. That's what we, we permit.
Okay. I guess that's what I originally, you know...
So, what you're looking for, you will get...
What I meant, not understanding the situations.
Jack, you're saying they take the lobster next door with them?
Yeah, yes.
It works.
I'm sorry?
It works that far, too.
And it works that far. It works a thousand feet.
That's not, that's, we'll have to discuss that with them.
I mean, I'll, I'll review that with the, the police chief tomorrow and have him take a look at that, but, you know, I'm not aware that, that they were serving alcohol without, unless somebody was in queue there. They may have served somebody if they were taking a meal, a takeout meal, but I wasn't aware that they were allowing people to frequent the facility just for alcohol.
Well, I know for a fact, just because of that.
All right. Well, that's something that we'll, we'll discuss with the police chief, and it will be something we'll discuss with them.
Okay, I'm going to go to Carol, and then Jim.
Steve, how many restaurants have this restriction? I mean, they all have to serve food, but how many say, how many of the restaurants in town have the same restriction where you, you can't order a drink without ordering food?
Offhand, I, I don't know. I know these two started out that way because both were dry until 1979, and both came in with restrictions that were self-imposed. In fact, I, I think it was you, Jack, that came in first.
Right.
With a covenant that, I think it was 10 years that you wouldn't ask for any changes because it was a limited license, if I recall.
Right.
For the first 10 years. And the council at that time said, "We're doing this as a trial to see whether or not we have any problems with the area." So, I know it was those two specifically. And the, the Seagull was a different situation because they had a bar set up on the wall, and they were using that while people were in queue waiting to get the seating, but at that time, there was no outside seating. So, there's been a lot of changes over the last 31 years as it relates to that, but I think that what, what the town's concern was is that if you were going to use the second dining room as, but for all intents and purposes, with the language that you were asking, could turn that into a bar without the need for food. And I, I'm not assuming that that's what you wanted to do.
No, that's not, that's not, that wasn't the intention at all.
That's why I think what they're looking for is the clarification that if people are in queue waiting to get, to turn in their lobster to you so that you can seat them, that they can get a drink at the, while they're waiting, if they're sitting out at the, at the, the new area that you develop. Obviously, I don't think that, you know, the town's interested in you having people standing out in front of the restaurant as they do now and consuming alcohol because I think that creates a difficulty for you as well.
Absolutely.
I think it's, if the service area is within the restaurant, which is a defined service area, that's on your plan today, and if they agree to allow for the, for the deck area, if it's the person waiting for the table, being able to get the, the alcohol at that point, I, I think that's, that's what you're asking for rather than just simply to say, "Two guys come in, they've been out fishing all day," and say, "I just want to sit around and have a couple of beers before I leave." That's not what the intention is for either restaurant from a municipal perspective.
I understand.
I'm going to go. Carol, you all set?
Well, I think we could also, I don't think it would prohibit him from serving a drink if somebody ordered takeout, or do you believe that the license prohibits that also?
As long as that person was in the service area, which would be the deck or the restaurant proper. But I think the concern has always been from the municipal perspective was not to create any place that would turn into a, quote, "bar" operation.
Okay. We're going to go to Jim, and then Polly.
Well, with the matter at hand, I'm, I'm not going to assume guilt first. I think that's a terrible position that we're putting ourselves in and the owner of the restaurant. I have no problem with the language here. He does need relief with his outside deck. If people are waiting to get inside to a table, if they've got to wait, why can't they have a drink outside on that deck?
It's a whispering...
So, the language here is correct. It's a weird, weirdly worded, but it, he does need relief from that.
It just needs proper wording, is what we're saying, Jim. I don't think we're in disagreement.
Yeah, we're all in agreement with that.
This assumption that he's going to do something wrong is a...
Oh, we're not saying that.
That's not, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, no, we're not saying that.
Certainly not.
We're just trying to clarify to make sure that we're all leaving tonight with the same understanding.
I think once you build this deck, Jack, you'll be...
I'm sorry?
I said, "Once you build this deck and you'll get plenty of people, and you have good turnover anyways, you'll have those people seated very quickly anyways. Your restaurant is excellent.
Yes.
Kids love it, yeah, so...
Oh, I think it'll be great with the deck.
I think it's great. Absolutely. I think it's brilliant.
So, I'm going to move to Polly.
Oh, sorry, Polly. Thank you. So, will this take care of it, then? It will now read, "Applicant requests permission to expand the area in which alcoholic beverages may be served to include a deck approximately 20 by 25, where alcohol will be served in connection with food only in accordance with the special use permit."
With that, you're saying food has to be served on the deck?
Oh, yes. This is expanding it to the 20 by 25-foot deck.
But if someone's waiting to come inside, you're, you're kind of saying that they have to eat outside. Yeah, I mean, they're on the deck.
They're on the deck, and they've ordered food, and alcohol can be served on that deck. Is that what you want? Isn't it...
That, and also while people are waiting for a table, beer will be served and drank.
Or inside.
Inside the restaurant.
Which they already have been able to do, I hope?
No, we haven't been. No.
You haven't been able to serve them alcohol while they wait for a table?
No. That's what it, my original limitations was.
Oh, is that...
You would have to sit down at the table.
Can our legal counsel...
And order food, and then we'll serve you a drink.
Can our legal counsel recommend some verbiage? Thank you. Thank you. I just have a quick question, Jack. With the deck, the 20-foot by 25-foot deck, will that be accessible to the outside or just through the dining room? And is it in the back or on the side?
It's in the back of the restaurant.
It's in the back.
And it's only going to be able accessible from the restaurant, so we have full control. Not going to have people wandering.
Thank you. I'm glad you've brought this to our attention, so this has been a good thing tonight. While we are waiting for the verbiage, I can probably take and open it to questions from the public. Okay? So, I'm going to ask the public if they have any questions, and they can come forward. Would anybody like to address this in our audience? Please come forward and state your name.
I don't know where to start on this, but I'll put my glasses on here. I'm, I'm here to support, support Captain Jack's request for an expansion of, of his deck. I've been to Captain Jack's for over 43 years. He's been a great neighbor, and, and he's my friend. But I, 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 I'm, I'm very concerned about the, about the easing of the serve with food at tables. And, you know, there, there, if you read the, the zoning board, the zoning board's decision of just a couple weeks ago, in, as, as a part of their decision, they said, "This will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, and we have a restaurant similar situation across the street that does serve outside alcohol as well without food." Well, I went, I've lived down there for, you know, many, many years, and I know that, that the establishment that, that we're referred to down, down the street also has, has the restriction, and their, their license is the same as it was back in 19, 1979, as, as was stated. But the bottom line is, the, the zoning board has passed this on to you today, realistically, with false information. Yeah, they, they say here, they, they, across the street does serve outside alcohol as well without food, but they're not supposed to.
I'm not sure.
So, the zoning board's decision is based on, is based on a false premise of, of, of the zoning board. And I don't see, I, I think the council would be negligent if they acted, if they acted on the application full knowing that the decision of the zoning board was based on a false assumption and not the fact. If, if the zoning board passed, passed this, if it got to this point, you know, they, they had to, they, there had to have been a hardship. That's what zoning does, from, from what I understand. And the hardship would be in this case, well, someone down the street, and I'm a businessman too, so I, I understand. If my competition is, is, it needs to be a level playing field. Realistically, you're the, you're the, it's like a football game, and you're the officials. It's got to be even Steven for, for, for everybody that's, that's vying for those, for those, those monies, those, those, those suppers. And, and sure, if, if the folks down the street, if, if they, if, if, if their restriction, if they had come to you and that restriction had been lifted, well, then I could see you granting it to someone else. But in lieu of the fact that they're still bound by that, by that, by those restrictions, then, then, then the zoning board made their decision with, with, without, without, without being privy to the facts. And I don't see how you can, I don't see how the town can, 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 can act on the application with, with the zoning board decision that it wasn't based on fact. It was based on someone's, someone's, uh, 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 someone's feeling about how, what the facts were. Somebody didn't go back to, somebody didn't go back to the, to the, to the original, the original packet as to what the Oyster Bar can do. I did today. And there had been, there had been a couple of, of, of changes, but nothing, nothing to the license. So, to say that someone up the street is, is, is entitled to a change in the license because someone down the street is doing something, but there's no license that has been changed, I, I just, I just don't think it's, I think it would be negligent if you did it. I think the zoning board should take another look at it and, 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 and with, with the facts. And, and again, I do, I do want to say, if, you know, we, we, I don't, I, I, I talked with Jack in, in his parking lot, and he mentioned to me, you know, "I'm going to put a deck out here." And, you know, I said, "You know what?" I said to myself, "If you do that, I'll be the first one down there." I, I, I'm, 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 I'm a, I'm a customer, I'm a friend, but I think you're setting a dangerous precedent here for that area. You know, I live down there, I see the congestion growing down there, and, and it's becoming, you know, quite a dangerous area with, with, with the traffic going, going, you know, back and forth to the beach, kids on bicycles, the congested traffic. And, I mean, something like this, how, how do you, how do you police it? How do you know? I, I agree. You don't want, you don't want people coming off a fishing boat and going in there having four or five beers and then, and then, and then driving away. How do you police this?
Actually, we do have a lot of police down there.
Oh, I know that. No, no, I, I realize that. But no, how, how does, how, how is it policed internally? And, and, you know, in 1979, no, let's face it, in, in January 15th of 79, the Seagull was, was given the first, the first liquor license. Directly after that, on April, April 18th, the same year, less than three months later, four months later, okay, Captain Jack came in, and rightfully so. It needs to be a, a, you know, fair. So, you know, you know that if you grant this, you know, within, within weeks, maybe sooner, then somebody up the street is going to ask for the exact same thing. We don't want that. It's not right for, it's not right for East Mattoonick, and it's not right for the town of South Kingstown.
I'm going to turn it over to our town solicitor right now, so we'll get some legal opinions here.
Okay.
Thank you very much, John.
All right, thank you.
Ellen, members of the council, in consideration of the zoning...
Roger.
The zoning board's decision was based on the testimony that was, was before it on that evening, and it was, it was for a special use permit. There is no, was no variance application, so the issue of hardship, et cetera, was, was not part of that consideration, did not need to be. I think what the zoning board's decision reflected was the fact of what they thought was customary operational down in the, in the area for, for the restaurants. I don't think at the time they could have been aware of the fact that the Mattoonick Oyster Bar down the street had a similar stipulation. In fact, I was there, and I don't remember that ever coming up. The Mattoonick Oyster Bar is before the zoning board this Wednesday evening for an increase in the size of their deck, and I imagine they will be back before you. What, what we can do is be sure that they understand that the, they do have that limitation, and I'll be happy to work with the town manager and Chief Vesby in any way that we need to. I do have some language for you that Mr. Alfred has assisted me with. When you're ready, I'd be happy to hand that up to you.
Do we have further questions here?
Can Nancy read, read it out loud before she hands it up to us, maybe?
You sure the microphone's on, Nancy?
Yes, it is. How's that better?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Following the language that currently reads, "To include a deck approximately 20 feet by 25 feet and relief from the stipulation that alcohol be served in connection with food only, I propose that you add, 'To clarify that liquor service may be made available for patrons awaiting food on the deck or waiting for seating or carryout meals.'"
Thank you.
I don't know if there's anyone else in the public that wants to...
I think we have more people that would like to speak. If you would like to come forward and state your name, welcome.
I'll be brief. Paul Hooper. I'm a, I live, have a house on Succotash. Been a neighbor for, with Jack's for many years. I was in front of the board here, it was maybe four or five years ago, and I mentioned it was in the paper, "If it walks like a duck, it squawks like a duck. It's a duck." And I remember being in the paper that the agreement was that it was uncontrollable, and I mentioned to the council at the time that I could sit on, on, put my hand on a rail and get a double shot of whatever waiting for my meal. If that's not a bar, I can leave, I can, what is a meal? Is it a jar of nuts? I mean, what's to stop people from going in there? And I, I live right at the end of the Oyster Bar. And I'm good friends with Jack, been there for 40 years. The, the situation is, you people aren't going to be there to monitor that. And what you're saying is, you're going to allow them to, to, to serve alcohol without a meal before they, they can drink and they can leave. We're getting out of here, and there's no one to monitor that. So, you're going to be drinking, and that is a bar. I don't see, I mean, I, I don't see... I don't see, I mean, I don't see how, if it walks and squawks like a duck, it's a duck. Thank you.
So Paul, can I just ask you a question?
Sorry.
So with further clarification from our legal counsel, which will be presented when this next application, they come in front Wednesday, the Mattoonick Oyster Bar, this all will be clarified, and there will be additional verbiage added so that we're all playing from the same roles.
Well, I just think we don't want it to turn into something that's not included in the area. It's just, it's not something you want. And I just think that it's something that should be given careful consideration, and, you know, I like to go down to the Jacks, I like to go down to the Oyster Bar, I just don't see, like to see it proliferate. And I think it's gonna be awful tough to manage that. And I just like, I'd hate to see it changed because of the escalation, put it that way. Thanks for the time.
Further questions here? Further questions from our audience?
I'd like to say something.
Come forward.
You ready?
Welcome.
Hilda Hooper, those are my boys, I'm very proud of them, because we've worked hard down there to keep the area so beautiful, and we love it. We love the wetlands, we love the beach, we love the people that come down for the summer, they're great. And we love having Jack, because he's making a living in the Oyster Bar and everybody. But we do wanna think about the drinking part of it, and if that's the way you're gonna have fun, we don't want ya, you know? We want them to have a nice meal and a nice drink. And apropos to your discussion before with this couple up here, you talked about a neighborhood, and this is a wonderful neighborhood. We've got South County hills, we've got a park, we've got Snug Harbor, we've got Potter's Pond, Wacamo Park, and sooner or later, we're gonna have a beautiful new pavilion, and that's gonna bring lots more people in there. So we have to be careful of what goes on in between. And we have guys 84-years-old riding bikes, my husband, we have young people going down on skateboards to the beach, South County people, and I appreciate your input into this. And I think the fact that a drink and meal is the answer, not just a drink. And as my boy said, "How do you monitor it?" You know, we have lots of problems, well, you know the problems, how do you monitor all these things? So that's it. Good luck.
Any questions here for Hilda? I just want John, Paul, and Hilda to feel comfortable that it will be monitored, and that there will be changes in the verbiage, and it will be enforced. So you have, you know, that pledge here from the town council. If you'd like to come back to the mic, please.
I guess this is the big one, how's it gonna be enforced? I mean, how is it gonna be enforced from the town's perspective? I mean, it's one thing when you can say there's gonna be a police officer down the street or whatever, but how is it gonna be enforced? Because that's the key, it's key to all order. And, like I said, I don't miss, I wish everybody the best, but at the same point in time, I mean, when you're not there, and it's 11:30 at night, and people are screaming and yelling, and you're having a good time, and where's the enforcement then? I just don't know how you can enforce that. I mean, when I came before the, I remember Jim and I had a discussion about it, when I came before the council four or five years ago, and we discussed that, was that, that was the agreement, that you had to have a sit-down and have a meal, and that was, that's changed. And if that's the way it's going, how is it gonna be enforced? And I guess that's our concern, and, you know, how are we going to keep an eye on it? This guy's done a terrific job, I cannot deny him that. He's been a loyal neighbor, but at the same point in time, you know, we're concerned.
I know that...
And I think you'd be concerned if you lived down there.
I'm there every day.
Good.
In the summer.
Thank you.
There's people that know that. I know that you have three or four, possibly even five, town council members here that frequent both establishments, as well as Mike Orsillo, who is our town solicitor. But it's, you also, Jack, if it continues, and you're, you know, lobsters are leaving, and you're still having people leave and come back, please feel free to pick up the phone and call the town. But you have strong representation right here at the table that supports that area. I know I for one will absolutely keep an eye on that. I have not seen that. Not sure, Jim, you frequently go down there, have you seen what has been stated tonight?
The, you know, I'm looking at this a little differently. I think Jack Pemont has been the kind of neighbor that South Kingstown has wanted for decades. I am willing to give him the benefit of the doubt. We have so many establishments in this town, we don't have enough police. If we didn't have great owners and such few problems, then I'd be concerned. We have wonderful owners of these establishments, and I think we've got to give them the benefit of the doubt. Obviously, if there are problems, the police will find them either on the highway or some other combination, but Jack Pemont is, you know, a neighbor who's gonna make sure he continues as a good neighbor with how he runs the deck, and I have all the confidence in the world. And that's the issue we're looking at.
I can just add one more piece to this as well. We are a member of the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention, and they also have money that they do hire people that will go to establishments, so I will bring that to the table too, just another way of enforcing, but we will do the best that we can. I'm going to go to Jack, and then I'm gonna come back to Carol, is that okay, Carol? And then I'm gonna go up, back out to the audience. Okay, Jack?
I don't know what to say, what was the question? Maybe you got kind of wandering there.
There was no question.
Okay.
I guess the question was, how is it gonna be policed?
How?
How is this going to be policed?
Policed?
Right.
Well, it's just, you know, the way, I've been running the restaurant for the past 38, 39 years.
We have all the faith in you.
They know that it's not an easy place, most of you people have been in there, and will continue to do as we do, it's fully family, my wife, my son now is in there, CIA graduate, so he knows what's going on. And we just don't, it's not a bar, it never will be. I like to get home and in bed by 10 o'clock, I'm not gonna be there at 11:30, I'm sorry. So, you know, that's all I have to say, just the past history should be enough to warrant your approval.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Carol.
Jack, yes, you've done a wonderful job policing up until now, and I just wanna say to John, and Paul, and Hilda, I mean, he can only be as responsible as he believes the people are. I mean, they come in and they say they wanna eat, that's their intent, he believes their intent, if he sits them at a table, and every waitress probably says, "What would you like to drink?" What's to stop the person right then and there, looking at the menu, having a drink, and saying, "I'll leave now." So, I mean, in a cer, to a certain extent, he's already policing that sort of thing. So I have the ultimate confidence in what you're doing, and I don't think he'll be able to figure out right away if he's got a bunch of guys who aren't gonna eat. That'll become pretty clear to you, I would think, in the first...
We don't have guys coming in, gangs, I mean, it's all families.
Right. But I'm just saying, if that's what they're concerned about, having a drink while you're waiting for a table, that seems to be what the concern is. And, I mean, I don't see that that poses a real problem under the, you know, the way you've been running your business. And I think you would identify that pretty quickly if that was the intent of somebody walking in the door.
Yes.
I think we have...
I have a question for Jack. Can I ask him a question?
If it's okay with Mrs. Hooper.
Yes, she was first. Come to the microphone.
You really need to come...
Am I loud enough?
But it won't be picked up for the tape.
Gotta come up here in the line light.
Right, and if you could address the question here, here to the town council?
No, I have two questions. Number one, would he agree not to have a quote-unquote "bar"? Where people stand and...
It's not asking for a bar.
Would you agree to that?
Well, I don't have it, I have a service bar right now.
A drinking bar?
No, it's, yeah, he doesn't have that.
He's not asking for that. He doesn't want that.
He's asking for loosening of the restriction that alcohol be served with food.
I think we've got that clarified, I think he's all set, I think we've got that clarified. He just wants his people that are waiting for dinner to be able to have a drink. He's good with that, we're all set.
Okay, now, what if, if he decided to sell the restaurant at some point? And, you know, as you look through, as you look through some of these, some of these things, you know, The Seagull was sold to the, you know, to Wiley's, which was, you know, became Fish Stories, and now it's The Oyster Bar. And the variances go along with the property. So what happens if, you know, Jack has been in the business, obviously, for 45 years, and he says, "You know what? I'm gonna sell and go to Florida." Now what? Now you've got, now you've got a new gang coming in, new owners, and we don't know them, we don't know them like we know our friend. Now what?
Whenever Jack decides to sell, it has to go to the council for the approval of a transfer. You know, when you're talking about a liquor license, a liquor license is a privilege that's provided to each of the applicants. The privilege that's provided provides them with the responsibility to police it on their own. If it's not properly managed, which certainly Captain Jack's has been, then it would be a case where the police department would go in, and the police department would determine whether or not there was process going that was outside of the limit of the license. If that was the case, the police department would provide a warning. If the problem were to persist, there would be a complaint filed by the police department through the chief with the council, which would ask for a show cause hearing to either to suspend a license or to withdraw a license. So the process is there, but because a license is a privilege, the first responsibility is the proprietor. The proprietor, if he does not, or she does not meet that responsibility, then it becomes an enforcement issue which eventually would end up before the council. Any license to be transferred has to be transferred through the council. If the council were to approve the language this evening that has been suggested, anybody buying that restaurant would not have the ability to post a bar without having formal approval from the town council. So it's not a case where, because Jack's such a great guy, we trust him, but we're not gonna trust the next guy that buys it, it's really a case where they would have to show, there would have to be specific performance before the council to advise on what changes, if any, would be agreed to.
Thank you, Steve. Sue, did you have a question? Hello?
Hi, I'm Susan Hooper. I think, to be honest with you, the problem isn't us trusting Captain Jack's, because I really do believe he'll police it. The problem is, you will give it to Captain Jack's, and then you will have to give it to the Mattoonick Oyster Bar, and they are a little out of control. So, if you ever go there on a summer night, there's cars parked everywhere, it's chaotic, it's a very small area for a lot of people, and if you open up this can of worms for one, you're gonna have to do it for the other, and that is a big concern for that road, the beach, the traffic, everything. And I think that's a big issue for us. Thank you.
So, with the verbiage that's gonna be added by the town solicitor, do you feel as though that's gonna help when they come in front of us, Mattoonick Oyster Bar, and when they come in front of us again? Did you hear the verbiage that's being added?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think there's a lot of stuff going on over there, and there's way too much going on, there's traffic on both sides of the road, there are delivery trucks blocking lanes of traffic, there's no place for people to go, and I think it's just gonna open up a can of worms that we don't need for that small area.
Okay, gonna address Nancy now?
Ella, I would invite the Hoopers to attend Wednesday's zoning board hearing, because I think they...
Thank you, we'll be there.
The zoning board needs to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the audience? Jack, did Mrs. Pemont wanna say anything?
I had one thing to say.
I know you did.
If anyone's concerned about the way we're gonna run the restaurant, if you think it's gonna change, it's absolutely not. And I guarantee you that, there's no way we'll let anything like that go on, it's not gonna turn into a bar, we won't let people hang around or anything like that. And I don't think we should be penalized being in business for 40-something years because someone up the street isn't playing by the same rules. I think each case needs to be addressed individually. And maybe you shouldn't give blanket approvals because one person has it, the other person should get it too. You know, that might be one way of looking at it, maybe you should look at the history of the business.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any further questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Okay, and do we have a motion? And somebody will have to read that.
May I offer the town council a motion? Motion to approve the application for expansion of a Class B Vittler liquor license filed by Captain Jack's Inc., 706 Succotash Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island, by Jack O. Pemont, President. Application requests permission to expand the area in which alcoholic beverages may be served to include a deck approximately 20 feet by 25 feet and relief from...
20 feet by 30 feet.
Says 25.
I'm looking at the zoning board application, said 20 by 30. Which is it supposed to be?
20 by 25.
You're gonna go 20 by 25?
20 by 25, yes.
20 by 25, and relief from the stipulation from an approval dated 1979 that alcohol be served in connection with food only, to clarify that liquor service may be made available for patrons awaiting food on the deck or waiting for seating or carryout meals. In accordance with the special use permit granted by the zoning board of review on January 19th, 2011, and as further defined in amendment site plan dated January 24th, 2011, on file in the town clerk's office.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Sure, please come forward. We thank you for your time for coming out tonight to express your concerns.
I just one question, Ella. The body that you would respond to if there was an issue, what was the name of that again? If you had a concern, and you wanted to express that concern?
Bring it to the town hall, could call Steve, you could call any town council member here, but we, you know, the police department, any of us here would take a phone call.
It's just something that, as time goes by, you just say, "Well, how do you address it?" If you needed to, I'm not worried about my neighbor here. I'm just saying, at some point in time, if you wanted to address it, how would you go about doing it? If you thought it wasn't being handled correctly? And how would you go through the proper channel to say, "Hey, wait a minute, you know, I think you guys should take a peek at this?"
If you want immediate...
Call the police.
I'm sorry, Ella, but go ahead, we do redo the licenses.
Yes, we do.
Right, and if we have, you know, any complaints filed, I mean, we take all that into consideration, because it is a privilege to have a liquor license. But if it's immediate tension, I mean, I would call the police department, if it's something that you want us to, you know, look into, call the town hall, any town council member here is accessible.
Good.
So...
That's fair. And, look, like I said, we want to be on a level playing field, and I understand his point, you know?
Come and visit me when I'm sitting on the beach, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm usually sitting next to John and Annette Donadio. Jack's family, so. All right.
Good luck, Jack.
That is our public hearing, and good luck, and we appreciate the concerns that you've brought forward, and we continue, please continue to, you know, express your concerns. Which brings us to the second public hearing. This is a public hearing relative to proposed amendments to the Town Code, Chapter 12 offenses and miscellaneous provisions that would establish a new section 12-13 entitled Pet Waste Management, with the elimination of subsection six, livestock and lodge animals as shown on Exhibit One attached here, too. So the public hearing is open?
The ordinances proposed is presented as Exhibit One on tonight's agenda. In starting, let me provide background as far as the existing ordinances that are on the books. Article 12.1-7 currently states that owners or persons having custody of domestic animals are responsible for the removal of the animal's solid waste from all town parks. The ordinances before you this evening would expand and broaden the town's existing controls in place over town parks to include all town properties, as well as private properties within the community. The ordinance that's presented to you is based on recommendations through the Department of Environmental Management as a best practices measure in an attempt to reduce the amount of fecal coliform which enters stormwater systems or into water bodies. Domesticated animal waste that enters the street sewer system for surface water, we have at this point six impaired water bodies defined by DEM, where total maximum daily load requirements have been instituted. For us to be able to comply with the requirements of DEM in an effort to reduce the amount of fecal coliform in four of those six areas, this type of an ordinance provides some relief. I will not suggest to you that the ordinance in and by itself will take impaired water bodies and make them unimpaired. What I'm suggesting is that there are a number of actions that must be taken by the town. These include cleaning of catch basins, removal of winter sand with stripping programs, the continued testing of various outfalls on our drainage system. But this is one additional tool which has been recommended by the state in our efforts to be able to comply and to provide better control means of reducing fecal bacteria from entering into the town's important water bodies. The ordinance provides definitions and requires that all pet waste be removed. Requirements for disposal are that all pet owners or keepers are required to immediately and properly dispose of pet solid waste deposited on any property, public or private, not owned or possessed by that person. This will be important as far as dealing with our bike path. The bike path has a great deal of traffic on a day-to-day basis, and in fact, we receive many complaints about animal solid waste being left on the bike path itself. We're hopeful that with adoption of this type of an ordinance and public notice of it, as well as direct contact with each of the dogs that are licensed, the owners of the dogs that are licensed in South Kingstown, that there will be a greater consciousness for the need for people to properly service after the pet has deposited. The discussions that we've had earlier tonight as far as violations and penalty, the suggestion was made that there be an initial warning. I would suggest that Article Seven of the ordinance be amended to provide, subject to warnings and/or fines as follows, and change A to be verbal warning, and then B, C, and D will be changed to the 10, 15, and 50 that are listed in the ordinance. Be glad to answer any questions that the council has relative to the merit of the ordinance.
Jim?
Steve, believe me, I know how difficult this was to put together. I really appreciate your hard work on this. Explaining this to my cats may be difficult, but it's, but do we have warnings on the bike path? Because that seems to be the one place that accordingly is the most offensive. Do we have signage, just reminders, Dale's nodding, but-
Yes, we do, and in fact, that's another one of the best management practices, is the signage throughout the town in proximity to the water bodies. In fact, we've also got signs that advise people not to feed the birds, as well as to curb the dog and to take the deposit.
And do we have one of those little, you know, glove, what do they call those, glove scoops, whatever they are? Do we have those like we do some of the ballpark?
Yes, we have the dog mitts, dog mitts are in each of our parks, dog mitts are also on the bike path themselves.
All right, thank you.
Further questions here at the table? Kathy?
John, you didn't happen to bring one of the signs, that would've been, so people, you didn't happen to bring one of the signs, no. No, it would've been, you know, just nice so people who do watch would be able to recognize, but they are a very nice sign that the Public Works Department has done their green with the dog, the deposit, telling people to clean up after their dog, so be looking for them around town, and people should just know this anyways, but I mean, we're really making concerted effort, because the water quality is, you know, is an issue, and this is an easy way to start affecting water quality, and everybody is concerned about water, and, you know, it's a no joking matter, and it needs to be something that everybody really does take care of, and the little bit of, you know, cleaning up that it takes is exponential on how it can affect the water quality. So it is something that everybody should take seriously, and make sure that they do clean up after their pets, be it cat, dog, bird, goose, goat, alpaca, you know, it needs to be, 'cause it's getting into the water, and that's really what we're trying to do.
Okay, further questions here, comments at the table? Carol?
Yes, I do agree that water quality is very important to all of us, and so these mitts are on the bike path, is that what Jim asked? Or they're not there?
They are on the bike path.
So are they, a lot of times you'll see them empty at different places, so how often do they get refilled?
We're refilling them very often. Unfortunately, some people take far more than they're gonna use for a given day.
Yeah.
But the parks department does refill them as soon as possible.
So if a person is in an area where they're available, they wouldn't have to carry along the waste removal equipment with them?
Well, anybody who gets the Providence Journal has waste removal equipment available to them on the plastic bag that they're provided on a daily basis.
Inside out, works perfectly.
And I just wanna-
It does grab.
Clarify that the domestic animal we're mostly talking about is a dog. I mean, how you're gonna enforce this kind of ordinance on an animal that is not under a leash law is, I don't know, would seem to me pretty impossible.
I believe that we're dealing here with dogs. I believe that if you wanted to put a leash on your cat and walk it on the bike path, then you would be accountable for the ordinance. But that's just not what we're seeing.
Okay. Polly?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
Yes, Steve, since we're, since DEM must be very pleased with us, with a lot of the work we're doing with our water testing, catch basin, sand removal, could you, one more time, tell us what happens to the sand that is collected in, you know, the basin stuff? Where is that taken?
The material is taken to the Public Works Garage on Ace upon Road. Then it is removed with lodge trucks and brought up to the landfill in Johnston. That's after we test it to prove that it does not have a high salt content. It's also used, I think, as ground cover for the landfill, but it's treated as a hazardous waste material.
Okay, well, I thank you. Thank you.
Any questions here at the table? Anymore? I'm going to open it up to the public for any comments or questions.
But I hope not.
Seeing nobody coming, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries five zero zero. Do we have a motion?
Please, please remember that Mr. Alfred has amended Section Seven, and we have that recorded, and we need it read back to you.
Right, and we now have A, B, C, and D, instead of just A, B, and C, with the amendment. So can we have a motion to approve public hearing?
Second.
And Polly and Jim? Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you. Which brings us to communications. A communication dated March 7th, 2011, from Salomon Gomez on behalf of Rhode Island is for the fear elections requesting the opportunity to address the town council regarding a proposed disclosure bill is received, placed on file in the town council, further directs.
We talked about this in the work session and decided to place it on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries five zero zero. Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. If anybody would like to speak and bring something forward, please come forward. Well, I have a few announcements. I just personally want to thank some of our members from the Guild for representing the town council here at the Keir Spelling Bee. So we had a team for the Keir Spelling Bee, we had Beth Miller and Shelley White from the Guild, and we had Senator Sizniewski. So thank you to them for representing us at the town council, I mean, at the Keir Spelling Bee, and-
And how did we do in Ed Upsetia?
We didn't win.
Okay. Everyone comes in second, right? Or everyone comes in third? That's great, we thank them, yes, we thank them.
It was a great fundraiser, they made a lot of money to support the schools. Beautifully done. And I would also like to just make a statement and welcome anyone to speak on behalf of the support to the Foreman and the Sherman family, and how beautifully the peaceful protest, you know, took place on Saturday, organized by Sharon Lillybridge. So if anyone, town councilwoman or man here would like to speak, Carol?
Yes, in light of the recent news of Michael Woodmancy's possible early release from prison, I'd like to take this opportunity to express my support, and I believe the support of the other members of the council, to the Foreman and Sherman families. I support the efforts of the Department of Corrections and the Attorney General's Office to keep Michael Woodmancy incarcerated, and in the alternative that the Department of Corrections and the AG's office pursue all legal options to have Michael Woodmancy involuntarily committed to a secure psychiatric facility for the safety and welfare of the people of South Kingstown and the community at large. Also, I would endorse legislation that would restrict or eliminate the actions, the ability for certain dangerous convicts to earn early release for good behavior. The bottom line is, we don't want this dangerous individual released from prison and back on the streets.
Further comments here at the table? Jim?
I couldn't agree more, and hopefully we'll find a way. Obviously, we need to get some new regulations and statutes in place that prevent this from ever happening again, these particular kind of crimes. But what was so impressive about Saturday was the peaceful meeting in March, the concern of citizens, just looking at the local newspapers, the response from our citizens near and far was really quite overwhelming. So I certainly agree with Carol here, and I think the position of the community of our concern, and hopefully the folks up in the Corrections Department, the AG's office, get to work immediately on this proposal.
Further comments here at the table?
I have to concur with both Carol and Jim. I think that, I can't add anything more to that, just that, you know, I've heard a lot about it, and my thoughts are with the Foreman family and with the Sherman family, and I hope the right thing is done.
Any further comments?
I certainly concur with everyone else, too. Thank you.
Obviously, everything that has been said, we fully support, and we'd also like to thank our police department for working with the family and the legislators, and we look forward to a piece of legislation that will come forward, so. Any other information that we need to bring forward here? Comments from anyone here at the table? I do have one little piece of information, that on February 3rd, the Trust Board of Trustees unanimously reelected Steve Alfred, our town manager of the town of South Kingstown, as board chair. So congratulations, and we understand you've been doing this since 1991, and you do a fantastic job.
Polly and I were there, we were at that meeting. Everybody listened to you.
We voted for it, too.
No, we didn't, we didn't have a chance, choice. Couldn't vote, but-
Which brings us to the town manager's report.
I think you've cleaned up a number of things tonight, and disposed of several items.
Cleaned sleep.
Without plastic, with plastic bags.
I don't have anything else to report.
And we have the town solicitor's report.
Will you take my leash, I lead?
I have him anywhere I want him. Nothing else to report, thank you.
Okay, which leads us to appointments, and I believe that we do have a few.
I move that we reappoint Deidra Derosier to the Economic Development Committee. Her term expired in March this, now, I guess, March 2011, and we reappoint her for three years, which would bring her to March 2014.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries five zero zero.
Also, I'd like to move that we reappoint Robert Kermes to the Economic Development Committee. His term expired this month, and he will be reappointed for a three-year term, bringing him to March 2014.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries five zero zero. Okay.
We're not doing the zoning board?
Right, I think that we're going to do that one at the next meeting.
Why are we not doing it now?
Which brings us to new business, item B. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to MHQ Municipal Vehicles 401 Elm Street, Marlboro, Mass., for three 2001 Ford Crown Victoria Police Interceptor V8 vehicles in an amount not to exceed $67,573, including trade-in allowances and equipment transfers installation, as further described in a memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated March 3, 2011, entitled Bid Recommendation Police Vehicles. Steve?
The town originally went out on February 1st to bid on this item. We only received one bid. I would ask the council to consider in the bid award tonight a recognition that the February 1, 2011 bids were rejected. That's not in the resolution, but I would ask that it be added. Recommendation is for award to lowest qualified bidder, MHQ, and it's for three Crown Victoria vehicles. Bids were submitted also by Central Dodge out of Rainham, Mass. The bid was for Dodge Chargers, the price was approximately $1,200 more. There was an alternate bid that was submitted, which was out of spec, so I won't, I won't consider that one, which was a, an engine, two vehicles that were gonna be a larger range than that which had been spec required. So I'd recommend that the council award as presented on the agenda, but to amend that resolution indicating that the council is rejecting the bids that were received on February 1, 2011, for the three police vehicles. As to- for the three police vehicles as defined in the chief's memorandum of March third.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a formal motion on that, to reject that bid.
I move that we reject the bid received on February first, two thousand and eleven, for three police vehicles, and as further described in the memorandum from the police chief to the town manager dated March three, two thousand and eleven, and entitled Bid Recommendation Police Vehicles.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor? Oops, sorry, Jim.
Yeah, Steve, those are the two automobiles that we use, the Crown Victoria and the Dodge Chargers in our inventory of police vehicles.
That's correct.
What's the ratio of?
Right now, I believe we're... Benny, help me with this. I think they're probably down to four on the Dodges and the rest of the Crown Vics. We found the Crown Vics to be more durable at this point than the Dodgers have been. But both vehicles, one's got problems with the transmission, one's got trouble with the suspension. There's a new police pack that'll be coming out within the next year on Ford Tauruses that'll probably replace the Crown Vics. But at this point, I think that the most serviceable vehicle is the Crown Vic based on the availability of parts.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have the New Business Item B that I read into the record. Do we have a motion on that?
I move approval of New Business Item B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Which brings us to New Business Item C. This is a resolution authorizing the extension of an award of contract originally granted on January eleventh, two thousand and ten, and amended on December thirteenth, two thousand and ten, to WW Granger Incorporated, seventy-eight Jefferson Boulevard, Warwick, Rhode Island, for industrial equipment and supplies based on the State of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement three forty-eight for the period ending April thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, and as further described in a memorandum from the Financial Controller to the Town Manager dated March ninth, two thousand and eleven, and entitled Bid Recommendation Industrial Equipment and Supplies. Steve?
We have purchased over the past fifteen years under a blanket award through the Master Price Agreement from the state for Granger products. What they do is they provide a discount on their catalog between ten and eighty-eight percent. The contract authorization from the council expired in January. We need that to go through April, when in fact the state will probably have the new Master Price Agreement in place, where there'll be soliciting proposals. So I'd ask the council to provide the authorization so we can continue to purchase with council authorization.
I move approval of New Business Item C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. Which brings us to New Business Item D. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to Everbridge, five oh-four North Brand Boulevard, Glendale, California, for the implementation of emergency management notification system in the amount of eleven thousand fifty dollars for one year and nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars annually for the subsequent years, as further described in a memorandum from the IT Systems Administrator to the Town Manager dated March eighth, two thousand and eleven, and entitled Bid Recommendation Reverse Nine One One System.
We are recommending to the council that the council provide authorization for implementation of an emergency notification system, often referred to as a reverse nine one one system. The communication system is telephone-based and designed to distribute outbound pre-recorded community notification to town residents in the event of emergencies. Many towns have gone into this type of a system. As the technology has improved, there's greater flexibility in providing these systems. The town should be ideally able to contact residents in or specific populations within the overall community within a very short period of time with messages if in fact there's emergencies that the notice is necessary to be provided. This would be with, say, hurricanes. It would also involve any type of notification as to, for public safety purposes, water orders, use of water systems which imperil the system from being able to provide proper services. All of that would be available. The Everbridge system provides citizen alerting and notification that can be generated either by GIS sets, geographic information systems, the mapping, through zip codes, radius, street maps, or any segments thereof. So we can set any configuration within a service area to be able to provide blanket notification to all residents in that area. We're also recommending the Everbridge system because in addition to being able to provide for a emergency response system, it'll also provide us with non-emergency response capability. With that, we'll need to build two different databases. The first database that'll be used for emergency purpose notifications will be using the E-nine-one-one database. That database for South Kingstown has approximately twenty-five thousand eight hundred landlines that are identified. E-nine-one-one will provide the town with that database without the names, but rather the locations and the phone numbers so that on emergency notification, we will be able to go to all landlines that are in the town of South Kingstown that are in the E-nine-one-one system at the state level. The system will also provide an opt-in portal to allow people to be able to enter cell numbers and to be able to provide us with information as to how they want to be contacted. It can be contacted through email, through voicemail, through direct telephone call, any number of different ways. The flexibility is great, and it'll come broader as the years go on. With the opt-in system, anybody who enters a number, that number will have to be locked in to the emergency response requirements. But the person will also be able to provide whether they want to be able to receive community-based information. Community-based information can be as simple as advising people that the Rhode Island program will be servicing a given road on a given day, providing zoning notifications of public hearings, something as simple as being able to provide people with notice of when property tax payments are due, so that they don't miss the due dates. Any of those would be available. The emergency system also provides us the ability to provide notification with interactive capability so that if we provided notice, let's say, for an evacuation of the beachfront, and we told people they needed to evacuate the area by a given time, it would also provide the ability for the person to advise if they had special needs where they were not going to be able to vacate without some type of outside assistance. By entering a digit within the telephone at the time of the message prompt, they can indicate that they need assistance. That will then provide us in public safety with the documentation so that we can then specifically contact those folks and find out what services they need and be able to work better with them. I think that with a community of thirty thousand and with the types of perils that exist within any community, the ability to be able to get instantaneous messaging out to the residents is an important public safety function. It's also important to note that we have to provide an emergency management plan that's in coordination with the state. Within the emergency planning requirements is a continuity of government requirement and a continuity of operations plans. This type of system provides us with fortification on both counts, for both the COG and the COO plans themselves. I think it's important for us to move in this direction. We'll be purchasing the services so that we won't be managing the data ourselves. The data will be managed through the third-party. That company is also able to provide notification of up to forty thousand phone calls in a given hour. And then to be able to provide us with a reporting system as to whether they got through or how many times that they had called a given number. I think the key here will be publication of the availability of the system and getting people to be able to use their cellphones if they want any type of community messaging. And it can become a important component for the town in being able to get public information out and for the public to have a better means of communicating with town government. So I would recommend that the council, that they would award as presented on this evening's agenda. The initial cost, the first year, will be eleven thousand fifty dollars. Thereafter, it'll be nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. I'm also recommending that it be on a year-to-year contract. We would like to also consider, once the system is built, a feasibility review on whether integration of the school systems notification system could be brought within the confines of this system. The school system at this point uses their own notification system. They're not having availability of E-nine-one-one database. They're simply building the database from each of the schools with the children providing, the parents of the children providing them with notification numbers in case of emergency or on school closing, or really on school events. That possibly could be brought into the system, but at this point, I'd like to, one, get the emergency notification system implemented and that database up and active. Two, be able to get the public notification out about the availability of the opt-in portal that will be available for people to bring their notification requirements, two is, and the phone numbers. And three, then to be able to look at the school system on whether there's feasibility of integrating their system into ours. We received four different proposals. The system that is recommended to you is a system that's been purchased by the State of Connecticut for all Connecticut municipalities to be able to use through their emergency management program. We don't see the State of Rhode Island providing for that type of a blanket program at this point, so we've gone after it ourselves. Prices with the other three companies were considerably higher than the terms and conditions associated with the Everbridge system. And I also think that the flexibility that Everbridge is greater than those other three for the things that we want to do. Our sophistication and level of GIS mapping provides us with a real positive in terms of being able to deal with this type of a system with Everbridge as the database manager. So I think that the committee that did the review here included the fire departments. With Union and Kingstown were invited, as well as the police departments and the in-house IT individuals in South Kingstown, as well as our GIS administrator. All found this as a unanimous recommendation to go with the system outlined in tonight's agenda. Glad to answer any questions council has on this action item. Yes, Kathy?
Steve, I was just thinking, when you're saying this about the schools, what about the University of Rhode Island? I know that they have a system there, but if we did have an emergency, the town was notified. And maybe in the future, I don't know if we would tie into the same system with the university. But if, say, you know, God forbid we ever really have to use this system. I hope we never do. But, you know, we do have a lot of lives, you know, just right up the road from us, too. And I was just wondering where you are. I might fit into this.
Once we get the system uptown-wide, then we could communicate with the university in terms of whether that could be brought into the database. Either that, or we could work out arrangements where messages that we needed to get out to the university community would go through their administration. I think that's probably the most viable way that we would handle the university because we wouldn't want access to a lot of their phone calling. I think what we would want access to is the public safety people who have authorization to be able to utilize their system because their system is much like this, where they're contacting the students and faculty both on an email basis as well as a telephone basis. So, yes, we will work with the university if we think that there's a joint message that needs to be provided.
Polly?
Steve, when will it be up and running?
I think it, well, once council authorizes the award of the contract, then I've got to deal with E-nine-one-one, sign the contracts with them to be able to get the database. Once that's done, the initial component of the emergency system probably should be three to four months. There's some in-house training that's necessary. I wanted to get this in place before September.
Carol?
Steve, I would imagine mostly we'd use it for, like, weather emergencies, but could we, we could also use this for, like, an Amber Alert for a missing child?
That's correct. It could be used for any number of purposes. Even if we had a number of house breaks in a given neighborhood, we may want to send a phone message to those individuals in that neighborhood advising them that they need better vigilance and that things need to be locked up. Again, what I need to do is to determine the availability of, the flexibility that we'll have based on the E-nine-one-one contract for that use. If that's defined as a community notification, we would not be able to use that database. We would have to go based on people giving us the numbers that they want. But I think anything that would be public safety-related would be available to us.
So you expect to be able to do, like, cluster calls in just certain areas?
That's exactly what this is. We can do the whole town, or we could do a street, or we could do a radius map if we wanted to go from a certain piece of property and go out a thousand feet. We could provide that, provided we had the numbers in that database. The problem with E-nine-one-one at this point is it's all land-based lines. And as the telephone has changed, land-based lines are secondary to the cellphone. So until the cellphones become a part of that emergency database, you really need the opt-in system if people truly are going to be able to get, who are on the go, be able to get the notices on a real-time basis.
Now, how would they opt in with the cellphone? Is there going to be a form or?
There'd be a form that's available, but the easiest way to do it would be on the internet. There'll be a jump from the town's website to the portal. The portal would then allow people to enter as many telephone numbers as they want that they would be able to be notified on. They could then give us an order of notice so that if we don't get you with the first number as your first priority, we would go to the second, we would go to the third, we would go to the fourth. If we got you on the second, it would give you the ability to say whether you wanted the third or the fourth notified or whether you wanted to stop and terminate the notice at that point because it was sufficient. All of that flexibility will be built in so that the person that comes to the website will be able to interact in terms of what, how they want to be treated. As I say, if you give us a phone number, it's part of the emergency response. You can't opt out of emergency response. You give us the phone number and say, "I don't want community notices," and you click that box, then you'll only be there for the emergency response portion. So it provides that flexibility, but the flexibility is limited to community only. It's not limited to emergencies. Our objective would be to have as many numbers for emergency purposes to be able to get to people as quickly as possible.
Further questions here at the table?
Motion to approve New Business Item D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Steve, I just want to say, you know, the fabulous work done on this, bringing us up, you know, for the safety of our community as well, so.
I think the committee did an outstanding job. There was a lot of detail that was reviewed here because these companies, they speak a different language. And it takes a lot to understand what they're really saying as far as the flexibility that it provides. And the technology is changing on a daily basis. Andy ran this with Greg for Guinness, and I think that each of the different departments added something to the discussion as to what they needed or they thought that would better help the residents in terms of dealing with government.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries five zero zero. New Business Item E. A resolution authorizing the town manager to contract with the Horsley Witten Group, three seventy Ive Street, Providence, Rhode Island, for specialized professional consulting services relative to the Planning Challenge Grant, Mattoonik and West Kingston Village Study Project in an amount not to exceed the forty thousand dollar grant awarded to the town by the Rhode Island Statewide Planning Program and as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Planning to the Town Manager dated March eighth, two thousand and eleven, as entitled Request for Contract Authorization for Specialized Consulting Services. Ivan?
Good evening. This request for authorization will allow us to continue our recent efforts at village planning for the town, and it would allow us to follow up on what we felt was a very successful effort in putting the Wakefield and Peace Day... was a very successful effort in putting the Wakefield and Peasdale Village Studies together. We're pleased that statewide planning made the Planning Challenge Grants available to us to fully fund this effort. The town's required match would be based on in-kind services from various staff people working on this in conjunction with the consultant. And we are, the planning board chose Mattoonik and West Kingston as the two villages to continue this effort with, and they both present some unique challenges and opportunities from a planning perspective. But I think the village planning model is something the planning board and staff have really embraced as a means to celebrate, support, and enhance village life within the community. And the villages of South Kingston are really the building blocks of our community. So we're planning to use a similar scope of services, general scope of services, to govern the work of the consultant. And, you know, the process we went through actually began in the fall with a solicitation for a request for proposals back in September that was advertised locally in the Independent, on the town's website, the state purchasing website, the Rhode Island APA website. We did receive responses in mid-October from five area consulting firms with cost proposals that ranged from a low of $37, $285 to $39,905. We did an initial internal review, and then we interviewed two finalists, and that was the very Waterman Group and Horstley-Witten Group. Those interviews were conducted towards the latter part of last month, and it was our recommendation that to recommend Horstley-Witten be awarded the contract. We also had a step that we had to go through, which is a little different, where we had the statewide planning review our purchasing procedure, and they gave us a letter of authorization to proceed with this contact recommendation. We do have a history with Horstley-Witten, and it's been a positive one. They had worked with us on the Wakefield and Peasdale studies. They've done some environmental work for the Department of Public Services on testing in the Green Hill Pond watershed area, and they are our consultant of record for the comprehensive plan update. They're very familiar with the town. We have a good working relationship with them, and we did feel, at the end of the day, that their proposal and skillset was best suited for our needs for Mattoonik and West Kingston. We are excited about this project getting underway. We think it'll yield good results for both West Kingston as sort of the western gateway to the university, and with the challenges of the bike path and the railroad station, and also with Mattoonik, you know, as one of our signature summer villages, with some of the challenges it faces with erosion, but also the great opportunities at Mattoonik with the vibrant life that's presented there, the institutional uses, the preserved land, and the recreational aspects of the area. So we are asking the council for your authorization to go forward with a contract with this firm and get the work underway. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have in this regard.
Thank you, Ivan. Questions here at the table?
Ben, where the borders here, I know East Mattoonik is its own village, but Succotash, East Mattoonik going to be looked at as part of Mattoonik?
Actually, we didn't plan to extend that far. We're basically looking at the core of Mattoonik and the feeder areas, you know, probably looking out back towards Route 1, the preserved areas, you know. Also, out to the west, probably looking at Roy Copper... We would look at Roy Copper's Beach and the Theater by the Sea in that vicinity, and Mattoonik Point, and the area in that, you know, right around the seaside, the old Harleys Market, the church, and that vicinity.
Further questions here at the table? I look forward to this report, too, because they do know our town so well. So they'll look at that through a different lens, but a same lens that they've looked at other areas of our town. So I'm really looking forward to the results here.
Thanks.
So, thank you.
New business item E?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Our last item on the agenda is new business item F. A resolution endorsing passage in the Rhode Island General Assembly of House Bill 2011-H5804, and I'm going to add the Senate Bill S0394, an act relating to elections, voting districts, and officials that would amend Rhode Island General Law 17-11-1, Division of Towns and Representative District into voting districts by increasing the number of electors allowed in a voting district.
The council first discussed this at the request of the town clerk when the council met with the legislators last December. The bill essentially would allow for polling places to have up to 4,000 voters. Current legislation limits it to 1,900. The proposed legislation would allow, if adopted, would allow South Kingston to reduce by seven polling places, and approximately a savings of about $7,300 per election. So in those where we have both a primary and a general election, we'd be looking at savings of approximately $14,600 a year. As Dale had brought forward to the council, one of the concerns that we have with some of the polling places is that very few votes are being registered, and there is really an ability for us to be much more efficient. The other thing it does is it allows us to reduce the number of people that need to work during the course of the election. I think the council is well aware, poll workers are required to be there before the polls open and until they close. In many cases, we're talking about days that are going to be 14 and 15 hours. To get people to do that type of commitment, and also then to be able to physically deal with that type of a time schedule, it's difficult to get that number of people today. So we've asked the council to provide endorsement, just as several other communities have, and I think others will come along. Westerly, Richmond, and Middletown have all provided endorsements to date. The other thing that this does is it says that up to 4,000. Would also allow it to go over 4,000, and those cases where the district that was left would be less than 1,000 people, voters. So I think that this is an important piece of legislation. It was originally drafted by the Board of Elections, the State Board of Elections, and I think it's one that most towns will sign on to.
Thank you. Questions here at the table?
I make a motion to approve new business item F as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. And before we adjourn, I just want to remind the town council that we have, in the public, we have a joint work session tomorrow, Town Council, School Committee, on the budget, and we have the PowerPoint presentation from the school committee in our packet. So if there's any questions before tomorrow's meeting, if you wanted to forward them to Steve, if there's any additional information that you need. Otherwise, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
A move.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries 5-0-0. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.